Do you take attendance?
Samantha Sperry.
Here.
Kim Christensen.
Here.
Arthur Christensen.
Here.
Nancy Seilander. Bob Jellin. Jim Mark.
Here.
Janice Chamberlain. Tony Pacheco is with us on Zoom.
Here.
Ruth Smith.
Here.
Deb Holgren.
Here.
Tim Rourke.
Here.
Morgan Donaldson. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Before we get into the usual, we give an opportunity for the public to speak. I just want to pass along a note that not everybody may know about, and I know Sharon's gonna bring it up in her report as well, but Ron Pyers, who was the longtime basketball coach at EEO Smith High School, passed away recently. I think Ron may have the record of the state or pretty certainly has a video of Smith. He had like almost six hundred wins as a basketball coach. My son played for him, others on the board, sons that played for him, I know Deb's did. And, you know, it's, it's a loss. He was an interesting person, is how I would describe him. Very interesting person and a good coach. So I wanted the board to be aware of that if you, you didn't already know. And then we can move along to an opportunity for the public to speak. Are there any members of the public that would like to come and address the board? Okay, but before we get to the consent agenda, I would also want to offer congratulations to Samantha and to Arthur to Nick and to Deb and to Tony and Janet, who are not here tonight. Because they all were winning candidates in, in the respective elections from the three towns. But congratulations to you all. And welcome aboard to those who are new. Even though one of them is sitting out in the audience. And so we can get on to the consent agenda, actually committee reports, and we start with personnel. But that would be Janet, and she's not here. So we'll table personnel. Policy.
Um, we had a meeting and the primary thing that we talked about was what we're gonna be doing for the grading policies that we're working on. We decided the format of that, which is gonna be a smaller committee, which is our policy committee, plus Renee, Lou and Sharon and three teachers. And then we're gonna be doing focus groups to be able to get larger community input from students, parents and teachers. And we, there's a consultant from, her name is Gabby.
Gabby, yeah.
Um, who's gonna be working with us kind of intermittently throughout the process, should we need her.
Thanks, Kim. Um, Brian, yeah. You wanna do that one, Ben?
Uh, yes. Finance committee met prior to this meeting at six forty-five. And the items we discussed will be partially in the consent agenda and then in new business. For any to say more about it.
No.
Yeah, so we'll be talking about those later.
The one under consent agenda, just so you'll know, is the we'll be approving the year-end transfer dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. That's on the consent agenda, and there'll be another one that will put in the new.
And that should be in the materials that we all received.
Right. Thank you, Ken.
Tim, I think also the adjustments are also in the consent agenda, agenda we talked about.
Sorry. Well, there were, there was, there were adjustments made at the October meeting.
Oh, yes.
That didn't make its way in consent agenda, so a recommendation occurred at the finance meeting in October, and it's on the consent agenda this, this meeting.
And then building committee, Ken?
Building committee also met just prior to this meeting, focus of the discussion was on going forward in future facility for the STAR program as well as the satellite programs currently at Mansfield Depot. Understanding needs now and in the future, looking at some alternatives, both my space, you know, geography, um, cost, that sort of thing. So discussion really surrounding, surrounding that. Um, and just ongoing. It's not a new topic and it's not over yet. So we'll continue to to work on that, on that solution here, knowing we have some, something's in place currently, been in school and that's what people, obviously.
Thanks, Tim. Great to meet you.
I'll speak to curriculum.
Yeah.
Curriculum met. Um, really, the primary thing we talked about was the NEAS visit and just through all the work that's been happening to update our curriculum. We talked a little bit about just the idea of syllabi and how those are they part of curriculum, are they not? And then kind of the crossover between curriculum and policy, just how that's very inter intertwined. So that was, that was our conversation, and we do plan to meet again before the end of the year.
Thanks, Kim. EDJ.
With, with. At the end of November.
Yes, with, um, with, uh,
Gabby, maybe.
Maybe, but.
To, to come up with questions for our focus groups.
Oh, that's policy.
Policy, yes, you're right.
But I was thinking curriculum.
I'm sorry.
Curriculum, we're gonna meet with, um.
Oh, okay.
Our, our curriculum instruction. Instruction, yes, yes.
And, 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 yes. And Dave, yeah, our, our.
The, the people have the feet on the ground here in the building. We're gonna meet with them for curriculum.
Thank you. Um, Tony, EDJ?
Yeah, the, uh, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, the, the EDJ committee met on October twenty-fourth. We received a report from Lou DiLoreto on the status of the implementation of the department equity action plans, which we, we got reports on from the various departments. And it was probably over a year ago now, right, Sharon?
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't last year, so.
Yeah, it was probably the year before. So we just kinda wanted to get a sense of where things were going. You know, the five focus areas are curriculum, professional development, diversification of staff, community outreach, um, safety and security. And, you know, most of us have, have, through the various committees, have heard reports on these, so I won't go into detail about those. I will, I will focus on one, which is, which we're also addressing, which is the community outreach. Um, our next meeting on November twenty-eighth will be a Zoom meeting. We are going to be holding some Zoom meetings this year in order to encourage participation by some of the parent groups, community groups and students. And we're also looking into scheduling at least one meeting or maybe more than one meeting as an afternoon meeting so that we can capture some of the student, uh, groups uh, who are involved in equity, diversity and justice issues. And we would do that at, at the school, so that we're, we're doing that. We received an update on the Saint Joe, the, on the Saint Joseph's studies. And we will be receiving a report from the researchers and, and an executive summary on the results of the math identity study at our, um, November twenty-eighth meeting. Again, that will be a Zoom meeting. And we spent the bulk of our time talking about the current status of uh, free and reduced meal programs in schools. For the latter part of the pri- last school year, we returned to a full universal free, free lunch program. That is not the current, uh, situation. Uh, the, we do, are now operating under a free breakfast for all students. And any students who otherwise qualified for free or reduced lunches are getting free lunches. But, but the committee has, has looked into a lot of research that, that indicates there's a lot of stigma attached with having to sign up, have families enroll in, uh, a free or reduced lunch programs. And that it, it actually, in many cases, inhibits, uh, students from, from, uh, enrolling in those programs. We are looking at the data now to see if there've been any significant changes from where we stood at the end of last year with the universal free lunch program to where we are today. We are also going to put on the agenda with our, our meeting with the, our legislators in December twelfth. Um, this, this item. First of all, we want to thank them for having, having, uh, included reduced lunches in the free program going forward this year. The governor and legislature didn't commit to continuing that beyond this year, so we want to encourage them to, to not, uh, go backwards from that position. And we'd like to make our case, depending on the data we receive, uh, of the benefits of, of going forward and looking at implementing a uni- going back to a universal free lunch program. So, um, we're doing the research on that. We'll be discussing that at our, uh, November twenty-eighth meeting. That's where we are.
Thank you, Tony. Um, we also have student report tonight, Valerie and Sophie. Who wants to go first?
Um, I can go first, yeah. Um, so for my student report, I had how the fall seasons of sports are ending, and it's ending off of a pretty good start, I mean, ending off of a pretty good end. Um, girls soccer and girls field hockey went to states. Um, field hockey lost their first round and soccer lost their second round, but they both played really good games. Football's also coming to an end soon, and they've won a lot of games this year compared to the past years. And volleyball season ended. The record wasn't great, but there was really good team culture this year. Uh, homecoming was also on October twenty-first, and a lot of students went. There was good attendance. The music and the volume of the music, there was a lot of complaints about, but otherwise there was a lot of fun there. And, um, for the PSATs for ninth and eleventh graders have both finished. This was the first year they were on computers, so it was a little bit of an adjustment, and I've heard that people did better on the paper test. But I've heard a lot of agreement about how the online test is a little bit more simple and it's quicker to take.
I agree with that. Um, often what homecoming was Spirit Week, Spirit Week was like a really big hit. Um, a lot of people, like, dressed up as like the days. Um, so did Halloween. Um, I saw a lot of students dressed up on Halloween. That was, that was interesting. And, um, each department of the school dressed up as like a different topic, and two did Barbie this year. It was a lot of fun. The, the spirits were high there. Um, on Saturday, there is a New York City trip offered to all eleventh and twelfth graders to the nine eleven museum. Sophie, are you going?
No, I didn't even know that was.
Yeah, some teachers didn't necessarily put the word out there, but I know a lot of people are going, and the first snapshot of the year was Monday, um, which means we're a quarterly week for school year. Let's go. Um, and then lastly, with the, the NEAS, um, were you?
Yeah, me and Ella were actually the same interview for that.
Yeah, that was, that was fun. I thought that was kinda cool, like, tell them what it's like. Yeah.
What kind of questions did they ask you?
Um, a lot of like, what we like about the school, what we change, um, about portfolio, uh, EC classes, what it's like being on the campus. What else did they ask?
Uh, we talked about like parking, math grading. We also talked about curriculum. Uh, we talked a little about sports and just like school culture and environment.
Um, before we get to the superintendent's report, I just have a quick question for Sean. Sean, did you dress up for Halloween?
Um, and I've seen the bit. Um, I won't lie, I, I dressed up.
But you don't want to.
Uh, there are pictures running around.
Social studies always, social studies always showed up. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll find them, don't worry.
We had a good time.
Did you outdo the math department?
Me certainly.
Oh, yeah.
It used to be the math department, yes, hands down.
I think my first, my first experience with dressing up for Halloween here was, it was like a year or two, because we, we didn't really, the first year was COVID and we really couldn't. Um, but the social studies department was a school of rock, and I was thinking to myself, how can they possibly outdo that? Because it was amazing. But, you know, they did.
Um, we, we can move right on to our superintendent's report, Sharon?
So, it's been a short, it seemed like a short, really, really busy month, um, with a lot of meetings. Um, we are wrapping up teacher negotiations, um, conducted set successful interviews for our HR specialist. Met with our attorney regarding mentorship paperwork, because we have opportunities now through, um, the research, the resource, uh, research course that's being offered, the AP research course, um, where there is a mentorship, uh, program that happens with UConn professors. So just kind of working out some of the, the legalities and the, you know, the, um, permission slips and things like that for just kind of a, a unique program to us.
Is that the English AP seminar?
If, this is the science research seminar. Yeah, so it's, it's expanded from that to, to this offer.
Okay.
Um, I had the pleasure of participating. We talked a little bit about this, I think, maybe at the last meeting informally, um, presenting with Lou and Jill Elliott and Megan Magnner at the Performance Matters Conference, uh, with the State Department of Education regarding our equity data, which, um, was really well received. We, I, we um, were alongside Plainville High School, so we were co-facilitating together, and it was really nice to get to hear what they were doing, what they were implementing. Um, we had got some good ideas, um, from them, and, um, we were just really able to share how we were, um, creating opportunity through, um, looking deep at our data on performance and on participation. And then, you know, mentioned, we didn't have the, the information back yet, but mentioned to, to the, um, two studies that are giving us a little bit of a deeper understanding into the student experience. So that was, that was amazing. Um, NEAS visit, um, was the fifteenth to the eighteenth, like the lady said. Um, and I attended a meeting with the board members on, on the, that Sunday, the, the fifteenth um, for that conversation. They are really interesting conversations. And, and, you know, when you really start thinking about all of the things that have been going on at EEO for a really long time, that currently is in practice now. Um, there's a lot of things to celebrate. Certainly, there's, there's work that we need to do, and we talk about constant improvement, but there's a lot of things to really be proud of, of what's happening here. Um, we attended the ceremony for, or I attended the ceremony for the town of Mansfield's award for voting participation. That was great. And at that meeting was invited to participate, actually, Jim and I both were invited to participate in, um, a government academy that Mansfield puts on, so that's next week. I'm really excited about it, and I met with, um, Peter Dart, the superintendent, and, um, Kathy Ward last week to really talk about the outline and, and what information people are interested in. But I was really excited. It's a relatively small group, I think of twenty, um, community members um, to talk about our program, to talk about how the region is different than the town, than the, than the board. And, um, you know, kind of what the logistics are that make us a little bit different, what ties us together, especially as it relates to what I talk about, I think, at every meeting, which is the collaborative between the superintendents for all of our sending towns. We did have another great schools partnership meeting, a superintendent's collaborative. And we planned for our full leadership meeting, so we met twice with great schools partnership, once as the superintendents, and then once as, uh, a full leadership group. We met here, we were the hosts. So, um, we had about thirty superintendents, principals, um, teacher leaders, um, here to talk about, um, what high quality learning looks like, what high quality, um, learning and teaching looks like in each of our respective schools, in order to really start thinking about putting together a progression of learning from pre-K all the way through grade twelve. Which is something that has been our priority as superintendents for the past few years, just having coherence between the, um, the K eights and, and EEO Smith. And we hired our HR specialists, who I'm very, very excited to introduce to everyone this evening. We had a really strong pool of candidates. Um, and I'm really pleased to introduce Amanda Banks, who started with us yesterday.
Yes.
Um, on November eighth, so.
Nice to meet you all. I'm excited to, to get started. It's been a great first couple of days. Definitely a whirlwind, but looking forward to meeting and getting to know all of you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome, yes.
And then I did just want to, um, again, reiterate, uh, Jim's sentiments about Coach Pyers. Uh, he coached here for forty-four years. Um, certainly, um, there's a wonderful article in the Chronicle, um, about his career with quotes from his former players um, that are just really, um, I think indicative of, you know, what he brought to the districts, i- i- and his commitment to this district for so long. Um, so just briefly, he graduated from Eastern Connecticut State University in nineteen seventy-one. Um, where he scored, he scored, um, thirteen seventy-two, thirteen hundred and seventy-two points and helped the team to two New England State College Athletic Conference postseason divisional titles and three conference postseason appearances. And he was also inducted to the East, into Eastern's Athletic Hall of Fame, and there will be a memorial service for him on November eighteenth at, uh, Eastern Connecticut State University Gym, uh, from two to four P M.
Hey, um, thank you, Sharon. We now have the consent agenda. Um, there are a number of items on the consent agenda. Does anybody want to make any changes or revisions to the consent agenda before we, um, vote on it? All right, then, um, does somebody want to make a motion to, um, approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
By Tim?
Second.
Second by Deb? Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, very nice. I can put it to a vote on favor.
Aye.
All right, are there any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. Um, the next item we have on there is new business. And I do believe we have some.
You. Yeah, okay, yes. So we have the, um, the Board of Education, um, the, the Finance Committee prior to this meeting met and reviewed the, um, quarterly financial statements for the period ending nine thirty, twenty twenty-three. Um, so we need to add that to the agenda for new business. Um, there was a motion made by the, um, subcommittee that they recommended the regional school district board of education receive the quarterly financial statements for the period ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. That was on the table.
Motion to receive.
Right.
Motion to receive made by Tim. Is there a second?
I'll see.
Arthur seconded. Um, we can put that to a, any discussion on that, on this moment. Okay, then we can go right to a vote all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed, abstentions? Okay, and then we've received it. Thank you. Um, we do have a number of items on the discussion, um, section of the agenda. First thing on there being international school trip.
Yeah, so there was a question that was raised, um, by two of our classic, our advisors, um, Joanne Johnson and Kim Wilson Fulton, who have an international trip planned. It was approved last year to Italy. And so they had some questions in regards to the, um, to the climate, um, that exists. And, and just, you know, had some questions about, um, you know, at what point might there be a decision if something gets pulled back?
It's kind of a draw.
It's for, um, April vacation. So in April, you know, right now, so what I did was, um, I checked with my colleagues. Um, it was kind of serendipitous that I had a meeting with, um, area superintendents the next day and got their take on kind of where everybody was. So right now, Italy as lo- as, as well as in most countries around the world are on, um, a level two of awareness for, um, for terrorism is, i- i- some have been in that level two for quite some time. It wasn't just, um, started recently as a result of, um, what's happening in Israel. So, um, none of those superintendents at this point are pulling back any of their trips. So my conversation with, um, with Joanne and with Kim was at what point, um, would they, would families be refunded? So the way that it works is um, we passed the, the deadline already for full reimbursement. Um, so at this point, if a family pulls their child or the board cancels the trips, the student would get a refund minus a ten percent penalty. Um, at the ninety-day mark, which is in January, the penalty goes up to twenty-five percent, and at sixty days, it goes to fifty percent. And at thirty days, it's ninety percent. If there were, um, if, if the State Department were to shut down trips, or if the, um, travel agent organization canceled the trip due to safety concerns, um, then it would be, it would be refunded. Um, but if, if we pull the trip or if parents choose not to allow their kids to go, then they would incur those penalties. So one of the things that I mentioned was, you know, revisiting this, since we're kind of at, we're in that space between ten percent, twenty-five percent, that maybe we revisit um, a little bit closer to that deadline, to that threshold. Um, but right now, the, the the risk level is at a two. Um, and most superintendents, actually all superintendents who are present at this meeting, I can't say all superintendents in general, um, are not pulling their trips, uh, but yet.
Do you remind me, two out of what?
Oh, two out of, I think, four is the alert levels. Let me check, I have my, I have my, my printout for Italy right now. So it looks, it though it's worldwide caution is what that level is. And that was, um, they had security alerts in Naples back in April of twenty twenty-three that had them in these, um, in that level. And then the worldwide caution was Friday, October twenty, of twenty twenty-three, Friday, October twentieth of twenty twenty-three.
Sharon. Jim, I ju- I will just note that having just returned from Italy, there was, uh, at many tourist-heavy, uh, venues and places, there was an incre- there was a visible military presence. Uh, so, uh, but we weren't aware of any incidents, but you, and we asked people, and I said, no, it was, it was, it, it had been on for a while, but that, uh, so, but that's pretty much the way they're, they're living right now. We didn't experience any situations at all, but there is military presence at all the, at all the major, you know, major sites.
When I, when I went on and I looked at, um, my computer's battery, battery's dead, but when I went onto the State Department, um, to take a look at, you know, the alerts, to take a look at all the countries that are, you know, what their status is, um, it was pretty consistent, so that they would consider it the yellow or the stage two, most, most countries are. Some of the countries that weren't, um, they're at about level one, um, are kind of, are in the Caribbean.
Where are the students going in Italy? You don't have to be totally specific.
I don't have their full itinerary with me.
I was just wondering what, what cities, because some cities are most dangerous.
Yeah, they, um, I can get that for you. I don't have it. I don't have it on my request. But one of the things that they did share was that, um, currently Italy's at a level to exercise increased caution, is the label on the title for that. Um, the travel company that they use has really a great insurance policy, so, um, and if the State Department raises a threat level and pivots international travel, the students will all have their mind of that. Thank you.
Oh. Compared to many spots in the US, traveling in, in Europe, there's often a much higher military presence than we're so used to, right? So there is that aspect, um, it's, uh, can be shocking sometimes, even when we're not in, in the, in the war. Um, and I guess, secondly, I would, if you're looking for feedback, um, I, I would agree with you. I would not routinely make any claims at this point. I think we'll know more here shortly, or perhaps we will, perhaps we won't, but, and, you know, worth, worth waiting. You know the date in January, that the, um, you go to the next.
Not include the date. So our first meeting, so it's the first week in January.
Right.
So, um, shouldn't give me the exact date. Just said, um, at the ninety-day mark in January, so I would have to work it back in April.
Okay.
April break.
Okay. That would be good to know.
Mm-hmm.
You guys want to talk?
Yeah.
Okay, go with Kim and then Arthur.
Um, have the teachers themselves or parents expressed concern? I'd be curious about that.
So, I'm sorry, say that.
Have teachers, the teachers that are going or parents expressed concern?
There's one parent who, um, expressed a concern that, um, is why they reached out, so.
Arthur? Just because I looked it up, um, it is out of four. One is normal precaution, two is increased exercise caution, or exercise increased caution. Three is reconsider travel, and four is do not travel.
Thank you.
All right, good. Thanks. Anybody else? Okay. Um, the next thing is fundraising activities.
So, we didn't put, that was a policy that we worked on, and, um, instead of having it removed from the consent agenda, so you, you all received it last time, but I think there were some issues, uh, because of the language. because of the language. And so basically, in that particular
It's, it's not, it wasn't part of the current.
Yeah, it wasn't this packet, it was the last packet.
Yeah.
So the, so the issue with it was, there were two paragraphs that alluded to the fact that there was a monetary threshold for when you had to request permission to, to do a fundraiser. There's not, there's no number for either of those paragraphs, there were no numbers indicated, and I don't know, it's a pretty old policy.
And we don't usually follow a specific number.
Right.
So we reworded it to indicate that there's not a specific.
And just, and just that, you know, in conversations with Lou, that one month notice was plenty, regardless of, you know, how much money they, folks anticipated, anticipated raising. What's really different now, I think, than, than in the past, is with the foundation doing so much of the fundraising through the Panther Challenge. You know, it's, it's variable, the amounts of money that each individual student group raises from that endeavor. So the only, the difference from what you received to what the proposal is, is that the, that we just, we leave it as we requested a month ahead of time, and there's no threshold on the amount of money that you potentially could raise. And conversations with Lou, who has probably the best historical knowledge, he doesn't recall there ever being a number in there, and that is, that it has made a difference. But he does follow the rest of the process, where teachers are requesting for fundraising. All of those pieces are in place, he signs off on all fundraising that happens in school.
Any questions on that? Okay, it looks like we have an executive session scheduled for tonight. I know there are a couple of things that we will need to talk about.
Can you, you want us to motion?
Yeah, do, yeah, if, if we could, would we ask a motion to approve the fundraising policy that was received?
Yeah, I moved that policy that's been revised accordingly.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Any discussion on approval of the call? Move to approve, is it a cool motion? Yeah. Second.
I think that's.
Sorry, did you, okay, sorry. So no further discussion? All right, we can put that one to a vote as well. Arthur in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion passes, thank you. Now, I believe we need to go into executive session. Would somebody like to make a motion to that?
So.
So move by Arthur, second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we have to go into a second session.